All systems are go. The time is six thirty seven P M. This is the City of Inglewood Planning Commission meeting for July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two. Roll call, please.
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Oh, and that's everybody vacancies. Okay, we have a forum. Thank you. We're down to adoption of the agenda if everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Are there any additions or corrections? Any additions or subtraction like I just said. Here and now, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move with you.
Before.
It's been properly moved by Mayor Wimbley and supported by Commissioner Daniels. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor?
Are.
All opposed, motion passes. We're down to adoption of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to adopt. Adoption of minutes for June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty two, special meeting minutes, and adoption of June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty two, meeting minutes. Does everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Is there any unreadiness?
I just want to make a note for future minutes. In a couple of instances, Councilwoman Watley's last name was misspelled, and she's pretty active here, so I just want to make sure we spell it correctly in the future.
Okay.
So no take it for correcting Councilwoman Watley's name in the minutes.
Okay.
Anything else? Here and now, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the minutes for June thirteenth and June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty two.
All move.
The board has been properly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number four. We don't have any public hearing items at this moment, so we're down to, well, first hearing of the public. Sorry, let me rephrase that because I kind of make some stuff up. This is the first hearing of the public for items on the agenda and not scheduled for a public hearing. At this time, members from the public are welcome to approach the podium, state your name for the record, and speak to items on the agenda not scheduled for public hearing. And seeing no one from the public approach the podium, we are down to public hearings, item number five, which we have. Now we're down to item number six, old business. Item A, case number twenty one dash twenty three, special land use, and case number twenty one dash twenty two, site plan review. Storage yard at two nine one one Ash Street. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval of the special land use request for a storage yard and consideration of approval of the corresponding site plan at two nine one one Ash Street. Anthony Paisley is the applicant. Mara, you have the floor.
Okay. I think we can just wanting to just come back from the applicant in the morning. Hi, Mr. Davis, or Marah. Thanks for coming out today. But just as a overview, the applicant seeks to build a compact storage yard at two nine one one Ash Street, and the project seeks to find three parcels located between Ash Street and Page Three, Northern Cherry Street.
Mara, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you turn your microphone off for me, please? Hold on, is it red or green?
It's green.
All right, I'm sorry, continue. Just continue as you were.
And so future use of a storage yard, an additional special land use request is required. The applicant is familiar with it. They propose to construct a storage yard, including open consultation and construction equipment. No vehicle parking on the way proposed. The site is owned and one, like industrial, where are facilities for construction and construction equipment included with the special land use requirement. Open storage permitted provided that it is enclosed in the building or in a square in the wall. After the book can be called an eight foot square wall around property. On a land survey is required to confirm that the vacant home on two nine one four Page Three featured on a view so that more of the property to stand alone parcel and not identified. Additionally, a particle combination will be made safe for the property to be final but can approve. So the planning department has written a review in to recommend approval to city council because the city council had the final say for the site review. But the planning department recommends approval to city council and have proposed voting to do so. One, I would recommend approval to the city council for the proposed special land use for a larger storage yard at Ash Street subject to the following conditions. And the conditions are that all requirements of site plan review are identified, providing information on the material required, eight foot industrial. And provide required maintenance keeping in here, keeping them outlined in the site plan review. So required maintenance and irrigation as required in every standard site plan is also required here. Provide information on the materials used to create shelter. And then receive a waiver from many wishes to allow a storage yard to be primary use. Right, usually storage yards are accessories to the site, so we want a waiver to use as a primary source of the site. And other general site plan considerations. Including details on how to abide by the or landscaping requirements.
Is that all from planning? All right, thank you very much. And Mr. Paisley, would you please approach the podium and you can address this body and any questions that we have, we would bring them up at this time, and anything you have for us, feel free to express that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's just a, it's gonna, it's just a storage yard, which we're we want to shelter for our equipment outside, you know, because the rain and the snow, you know, it's it makes it last a little longer, our equipment. That's it.
As far as the recommendations, I guess I should say, from the planning department, are you able to accommodate those?
Yes, sir.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns for the applicant? Commissioner Bazin.
I'm just curious, what is the primary use for the equipment? Is there like a second location where your business operates?
We do cement and driveways and stuff like that. It's just, it's just doing it in the yard. That's it.
Okay. But the business operates like, are you like a home based business?
Just get.
Okay, okay.
Anybody else?
Just for clarification, you're gonna have, you are gonna have a shelter and a fence pole?
Yes, yes.
And this is specifically just for your own personal use?
Yes.
You do not have any employees?
No.
There's no use for parking?
No. No use for parking at all.
All right, anything else for, anything further, or anybody else?
I have a question for the planner.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we are authorized to permit a waiver for what is typically a secondary use to be the primary use. So Mara, if you you might not prefer, I do first names, I'm sorry, but for, thank you. I just want to make sure we have the, we have the authority to waive and make this, what is typically a secondary use, the primary use on the site.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all my questions.
What was I responding? It's typically what? You said it's typically what? I didn't hear what you said.
Okay, yes.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Paisley.
Thank you.
All right, we've heard from the planning department, we've heard from the applicant, and we've had our questions addressed. So at this time, I guess the floor is open for a motion to approve the special, I'm sorry, to recommend a special land use to city council with the recommendations from the planning department.
So move with you.
Second. It's been properly moved by Mayor Wimbley and supported by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The next item to consider for approval is the site plan review. The motion is, I'm sorry, the floor is open for a motion to approve the site plan review.
Motion to approve the site plan review.
They're probably moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Mayor Wimbley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Should have told the applicant to wait at least till we finish vote.
Maybe they thought that was it. Maybe they thought that was the only thing.
I don't think they knew that.
It's all good.
That was the first one that was done. I'm looking at each other like, that's it. We gotta go back to work.
All righty. Moving on to item B. Case number twenty two dash sixteen, special hand use, and case number twenty two dash fifteen, site plan review. Adult use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision center at two nine eight nine nine Michigan Avenue. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval for a special land use request and approval of site plan for an adult use marijuana retailer and medical marijuana provision center and general retail in the V three general business district at two nine eight nine nine Michigan Avenue. I have the applicant's name here. I do not wish to butcher it, so. Okay. All right, I didn't want to butcher it, just because I'm looking at it. Say it again. You're used to it. All righty. He's, as stated by the city planner, he's the applicant. Mara, you have the floor.
Okay, this is another project that we're taking nine eight nine nine Michigan Avenue. We're we reviewed the application for site plan with the legal consideration. The applicant proposes to construct a marijuana provision center and adult use retailer, as well as two other general non-marijuana related operations on three acre sites, south of Michigan Avenue between Pennera and Willup Road. This location is within the impotentiary district. The project summary again is to combine three vacant lots into a creator site. The development will have, will use the existing one thousand six hundred square foot building as a marijuana business, and then will develop three other additional retail shelves, and then another fourth retail building that is a drive through restaurant. So Magnum Development will need the city in that area. And site plan also shows that the applicant will create a water feature, a fountain right off Michigan Avenue, which is adjacent to Westland, and will act as a gateway to answer as happened by the planning department has agreed to recommend approval of this special land use to the council and also recommend approval of the site plan. We have our recommended approval and motions, the motions, and these two, and three. Your friends.
All right, thank you, Mara. Would the applicant please approach the podium, and you can address this body at this time?
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Major Seymour. I'm the architect for this project, and I'm representing the owner tonight. I also have with me the property owner and his attorney, and also one of my associates, architectural associates on that side. Before, I think maybe I, let me share with you just some of the renderings that we didn't have the opportunity to share on the last side.
Thanks, David.
I believe you're familiar with projects from the unit.
That's more like it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I don't want to, you know, hash things that we already talked about. But the the point being, I believe, last time, or last meeting, there may have been some confusion on the phasing of the project. So the, to reiterate, the intent of this development is to start with phase one, which is the existing building, and for that to be completed within this year. And then in two thousand and twenty three, it would be phase two. And phase two would take, would expand onto phase one, and would pretty much occupy acre number two on the site. Phase two is going to expand the what would be an existing retail or dispensary, but it would add about five thousand square more feet of general retail. Then phase three, that would be acre basically number three, that would be and year two thousand and twenty four. So we have two thousand and twenty two, phase one, two thousand and twenty three, phase two, and the year twenty four is phase, phase three. The we do have actually what I would like to mention, that even phase three may happen sooner than the year twenty four, depending on the interest of that independent building that we have for phase three. So far, we have a strong interest from Happy's Pizza for a drive through facility and a sit down in there. So that's really in a nutshell. We think like Mara indicated, that we feel that this, this project, at least with the vision that we have, it would be a gateway to the city of Inglewood. We believe that the developer is investing and not only in their own benefit, but also investing in the streetscape of the, of the city and, and creating this pond and this congregation area, so to speak, around the pond and seating out, you know, outside and what have you. That would contribute. We think it's a good, good contribution. We also believe, and I was here the last meeting, I some of the, the other businesses, I think they had the leg up because they have been in the city of Inglewood, and they have had the opportunity to contribute to the welfare of the city of Inglewood. And it would be kind of unfair, so to speak, to presume that this new business would not be the same, the same way. And I have all the reasons to believe that it would be the same way and maybe a little more. So what we would like this board to do, if you are keen to do that, is to really look at this and and, and this new light, and if there's still a confusion about the phasing, I can elaborate on that more. But we have all the requirements in place to take this on and get it going and come two thousand and twenty three, the spring two thousand and twenty three, you would see phase one and that pond and fountain and so on going on. And phase four, as I said, it could happen in the year two thousand and twenty three, depending on the interest of that last building we're going to put there. So I would be very happy to answer any, any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, commissioners. This is Trish's quick question. As it relates to phase three, you said the interest. So are you, is it promulgated or you erecting the building based off of who's gonna come there, or are you gonna put it there regardless?
We, we would like to think that regardless, we don't really want to take two years to procure that interest, so to speak. We think, we think that interest is there already, like I indicated, that Happy's Pizza is already has a strong interest. We would like to, frankly, personally, I would like to see a Tim Hortons in there because it's a perfect fit for them. We do have relationships with Tim Hortons developers, and we are talking to them. So we are active and pursuing a tenant for that, for that area. And if not, I did speak to answer your question exactly. I did speak with the developers, is that that third building is happening no matter what.
Okay. And are there, anybody else?
Between Happy's and Tim Hortons, you gonna combine them in one building or just gonna have one franchise?
One of the two.
One franchise.
They, they both, obviously, it's important is a I mean, it's mainly a drive through, you know, business. So our site is very, very friendly and accommodating for a, a drive through. You have, we have the room, we have the circulation, the stacking. It is very attractive for a, for a drive through business.
Right, now you know that Tim Hortons, we got two, the Dearborn, one in Wayne. They allow them so many apart. I know the two right there, Dearborn is right on top of each other.
That's true.
Coming in the Inglewood, we got the only one is in Wayne, but they accommodate putting a Tim Hortons there if you're people talking.
We're, like I said, we're actively pursuing that, and obviously, there are other the building, mind you, mind you, the building is, is not huge, you know, it's about twenty four hundred square feet. So this is really affordable by many, many businesses. We would like that Tim Horton streak, so to speak, along Michigan Avenue is to, to, you know. I am, I'm really very familiar with the, with the city of Inglewood. I did the police and court building next door here to you, and twenty some, twenty years ago. I did the city of Wayne Police Building on the other side of, done here, so I know that also you had developed the, the city hall, I mean, and the, the so it's really time for that stretch of Michigan Avenue there to take really a new look. It's time.
And what about Happy's, what they, what they present to you about coming, what the Happy's Pizza saying?
They're, like I said, they have very strong interest, and that's why I indicated that although phase three we're saying it's the year twenty four, it may happen a lot sooner than that. It would be I don't want to mislead you and say we have a tenant.
Right.
But all I can tell you with confidence is that there is interest and strong interest. And we feel that this will materialize, whether it's Happy's Pizza or somebody else.
Yeah, or, or, yeah, one, one thing is, there's so many things out there, you know?
It, it, it's also, if you drive a little bit down, you know, there's that big mall, big retail area there and so on. Our site, the, the, the good thing about our site, it's really attractive for, because of the room that we have. And it's like a friendly to approach it. You can make the turn around on Michigan, come back to it, or if you're going east, you can easily get into it. And that's where on purpose, we wanted to create also that additional feature in the front, and really make this like a place to slow down, not just to keep, you know, it's the intention.
Sure, Chair, all right, planner. Is it possible to put this into the development agreement as we're going through this, or would we have a development agreement with them?
Right.
That's what any of, that's what any of the new businesses talk about, new deal, as it relates to just building out. And I appreciate the candor as it relates to the phases, because I understand that, so, you know, they're saying it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen overnight, you know, so I appreciate that. At the same time, is it, are, you know, because again, on the city side, it's our end goal to develop business and other businesses outside of marijuana. I mean, that's the attraction for all of this for you all too.
We, we think that.
Let me, let me finish asking, you know, my question out to the planner. So is that possible or no? Because we talk about just a development, development agreement overall. Could we do that?
Well, well, I see site plan as a development agreement, so I think I agree with your question, asking the applicant if you're going to have the drive through restaurant, if that is going to be a show of a building. And I think you answered, yes.
He did say yes. He did say yes, but I'm just talking about having it in writing.
Yeah, so what's in writing is the site plan.
Okay.
We, we authorize the occupancy. We would make sure that the site plan, all elements of the site plan are are brought forward during our building inspection, and that's how the building would get there. They match the requirement to the site plan.
Go ahead.
My question is also to you, so like this is beautiful, but it's not, you know, it's separate from the packet that we got. So I'm curious what it looks like to ensure that the design is like what we're seeing here as opposed to what we saw in the packet. So I guess from a procedural standpoint, at what point is the design standardized so that we could get this?
If I may, if I'm not mistaken, which I think the, the packet that you have does show that, it just doesn't show it, doesn't show it in color and in three dimensions. Okay, but those materials that you see on there, that design and that look, that is what on those plans. But I, I fully agree with you. When you look at the, at the, just the pictorial, you know, two dimension, it's, it's different, a lot different from doing that.
And we review it electronically, so it gets very difficult to see a level of detail that will help us to understand like materials and colors and.
But this is no different than than actually what you see on, what's shown on the plans. And just if this may mean anything, those fountains you see on there, we're installing one right now on a project in Westland. Those things are not like highly expensive. You're talking about not even ten grands to do a feature, once you do the water, you know, and all that, so. It's with lights even, that would, so.
I'm guessing the level of detail that you're describing was in the packet for the meeting that I wasn't in attendance with. So I did get a debrief, but I didn't see the, but thank you for the clarification.
Do you have site plans for all applicants in prime?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I would like to elaborate more. There were questions. And that is, because I don't think that they, I don't think so, anyway. I'm just gonna say in lay in terms of what I what I'm, what I would like to see too, you said, and you talked about the Happy's Pizza and, and the Starbucks. So are you saying that that?
Yeah.
So you know, because we would like to see other businesses up and down Michigan other than the medical marijuana. So is that something that we could say that you're actually gonna do? I know you said that you can't just promise that, hey, we're gonna have either one of these, but are we gonna have any other business, other, you know, are we gonna have any other restaurant, whether it be a Panera or Starbucks, something where somebody could actually stop and stop in the city of Inglewood?
This is, this is the intent. If you look at, okay, right now, and to answer your question, sir, is that we're saying that if phase one is granted, then Uh, we're saying that if Phase One is granted, then Phase Two is happening regardless.
Phase Two is what?
Is, is, is going to take place.
Okay.
Right, and Phase Two is intended, yes, it will expand the, the marijuana business by a couple of thousand square feet. But there's additional five thousand square feet for other businesses.
Right, that's what we're talking, this is what we're talking about that part here. So that five thousand square feet building could be any one of these restaurants that we're trying, hoping that could, that could lease that space.
Yes, yes. And the, the idea again is to create this uh. Um. This feature. Is, is like I said earlier, is to have people slow down and look and say, you know, this is, this is. This is new.
And, and so, so is, is that something, Mara, that we can say half, I mean, I, I know I'm probably saying this wrong, but. Is that something that we can say that, hey, this is what we expect to be is something other than just the medical?
I, I can testify to the intent that we have or my clients have. Uh, but legally, I don't know what language, it's, I, that's not my, my expertise.
But that is, but that is the, that's the intent.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's also in our interest, right, in my eyes, to develop a general retail business as well, that also makes you a lot of development, more traction. Uh, so in terms of bringing in a tenant for that general retail, that is something we kind of do, I think, um, like, like Mr. Samo. Um, he was just illustrating, you know, a few tenants who develop, develop business. Like he said, I mean, that development is gonna be developed regardless. Um, now the timetable we expect to be by twenty twenty-four, um, we, we hope for it to be sooner, but you know, that's up to, you know, level of interest in. You know, like Mr. Samuel was saying, it's, it's high interest, so.
And, 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 and in the, in the, in the, the maximum time. When you say twenty twenty-four, we talking December twenty twenty-four, January? So are we talking? That is the maximum time that you would need early this, this, this entire project?
Phase one, phase one, we think can happen this year because it's a small building and. Uh, Phase Two, it will take longer because there's more site work there and. Uh, and bigger building. Uh, so that will, you know, start happening in twenty-three and finishing.
We're talking about at least two years.
Uh, a year and a half.
Twenty-four months.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And that's realistic.
Yeah.
You just don't want to just say, yeah, it's gonna happen tomorrow. Like I said, I appreciate that.
I. Um. I, again, you know, I've, I've been around this business quite a bit, uh. I am very pleased, I'm very pleased actually uh to. Um, to feel this interest and, and tenants, uh, wanting to be there. We're excited about it. We would like you to be equally excited.
And get to reiterate, we definitely appreciate it.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah. My fault, I didn't bring it the last time and I, I'll take the fault from now.
Yes, ma'am. Right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify your first question there, Carrie. Uh, so when an applicant presents a site plan, the, they have to follow through with the site plan. In order to get through the, all the processes, the, the next process approval, so the next process is uh final site plan involved. And then you go into our six and fifty, six and fifty occupancy and. So uh, if the applicant were changed site plan in any way, uh, they would have to come back to reapproach funding commitment and absolutely. The way the site plan is benefited today, they are confronting, using one building, putting marijuana purchase. Having a minor addition to that building and then using five thousand excess square feet for non-marijuana retail. And then having a third building for a restaurant drive-through. That's how the, the site plan is being done today and that's what you need to effectuate annual purchase.
Any further questions, comments, or concerns, Commissioners? Commissioner Davis.
Okay, this is like, yeah. This is the new building.
Right.
It's the existing building, you gonna add on to that there.
Right.
So what type of changes to the existing building? The restructuring, uh, get it up to code, what you?
Oh, yeah, it, it has to be a.
Has you taken a ten, taking like part of it down or rebuilding around that structure that they're now?
Well, the interior is, so we're going to be totally gutted. And the exterior obviously is going to be, to be upgraded, you know, uh, significantly. And uh, one thing that's very, very important and we already thought about, if you look at it, there's a, a steel retaining wall.
Yeah.
Back there, so uh, we, I came up with the idea and I would like to, uh, uh, we would like. Obviously to keep that, but we would like to bring a life to it by. Uh, you know, seeking, you know, some artists or two in the community here that can really create some kind of a theme.
Awesome.
You know, for, for there, yeah.
As the building, as it sits now, is it going to expand it back a little bit?
No, we're not really expansion.
Just gonna regut the whole building, rebalance it.
Exactly.
Bring it totally out.
We have uh quite a bit of uh brush in the back.
Yeah.
And uh, all that, some of it has been cleaned, but all that is going to be cleaned up and uh. So it's a, we would love to add to it now if we can. You know, but my understanding is that, that, that this was limited to the existing building.
So if everything goes planned, this building. Would be redone along with this at the same time?
Uh, now with the back?
Oh, this building here, the existing building.
Is now, is, is.
Is there, right, and then at the same time you're regutting this here, you could be building that?
Yeah. I, maybe I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay, existing.
There's existing building that's there now.
Yeah.
When you start redoing that, if things go as planned, you start redoing that building, this building go up at the same time as you doing this building?
No.
This building won't start taking.
What we're saying, what we're saying, that building in the back. Uh, what's, uh, this is almost August in here, uh, this will be done before December. Okay, then come, as we do the plans for Phase Two and come for permits and what have you. Uh, we would anticipate construction spring of twenty twenty-three on that.
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. Just wanna be clear.
Any further questions, Commissioners?
I'm going to do like the last applicant, I'm just going to walk out that way.
So good luck, Charlie, right? Uh, Mara, go right ahead. And that's for all of them, not just for this one.
Yeah.
These guys are thinking, we're picking on them or something. It sounded like that earlier and, and understand this, Eric has been around our community about. Three years, so he's had opportunities to get involved and he just hasn't. So, look, look, I just wanted to make sure, I put that on the record. Because you were saying that it seemed like, you know, the other folks, they have been here and they had opportunities, Eric has been in our community for at least three years. And he's had opportunity to be involved at numerous of giveaways and uh, just even recently, our summer music festival declined, so. You know, it's just that ten on, on who you have representing you.
We uh. Again, I.
Well, I know the owner is sitting back there, so it's like, you know, even for him to come up and speak to us, you know, that's important too. So just don't think that we're, you know, you, you, you came right off, it was seeming that we were showing favoritism to other people, that's not the case, you know? Um, you know, we just wanted to see the plan and, and see an actual plan that made sense. Yeah.
I. I, you know, I understand, and for a, for a business to benefit from a community and not contribute to that community, I think it's kind of foolish and it would be shooting itself.
No doubt about it, but you guaranteed is that it's gonna be that and more, so I'm looking forward to that.
Yes, I, I actually, I, I happens to be the architect and also the builder.
Okay, good.
And, and I, you know, I, I assure you that the looks you see on there are, are, you're going to see.
So you're going to be the architect and the builder?
Right.
Really? Um, let, let the worker show that Commissioner Williams has joined us. I did pass her my renderings of the project we're talking about right now, which is under Old Business, item. Six B. I did wanna give her an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have had. Yeah, okay, thank you. All righty, Commissioners, any further questions, comments, or concerns for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you gentlemen very much.
Thank you.
Anything further, Commissioners for the Planning Department? Hearing none, Mara, did you have anything further to address us? All right. Um, first item is the special land use, floor is open for motion to recommend special land use to City Council. Is this board, has been properly moved by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Davis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, all the polls, motion passes. Few, we're now on the site plan review. You got two parts. So the floor is open for a motion. You got two parts, just like the other applicant. The floor is open for a motion to approve the site plan review.
Go home, Mr. Chair, what's the additional requirements per planning?
Support. Probably move by Commissioner Daniels and supported by Commissioner Davis. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, all the polls, motion passes. We're down to item C under Old Business. That is uh, uh, six C. Case number twenty-one dash seventeen, special land use and twenty-one dash sixteen, site plan review. Hookah Lounge and Restaurant at three six four Inks to Row. Review and consideration of recommendation of approval of the special land use request and approval of site plan. For your hookah lounge and separate restaurant in the B two. Earl Fair Mix Use District at three six four Inks to Row. Ahmad Youssef is the applicant. Mara, you have the floor.
And it's my pleasure to welcome the applicant once more at the commission. Uh, the commission has reviewed the above site plan, the site plan hand proposed to the restaurant. At the forum for this huge house. Millie Street Movie Restaurant at three six four Inks to Row. The carryout or small restaurant will operate as a separate business from Hookah Lounge. This review is based on the application dated October twenty twenty-one. And recent minutes I plan sent on Tuesday of this year. The proposed use being of our lounge nature requires a special danger to use by it was under your, your approval. And we also had a public hearing in January earlier this year. Uh, we do not need another public hearing because public is already been heard in January. Right now, uh, the commission asked the January meeting for feedback on uh, the site plan itself, so. The department to work with the applicant, provide more information. And we're ready for that again, for special danger to request a site plan approval to the commission. So with the warm-up project, it's point five acres. And located along Inks to Row, Northern Southern Avenue. Besides the extra urgent care business in a parking lot in South. Per acreage is about four thousand square feet. Uh, it is in P two, P three. One thing that the planning department, a couple things, one thing that the planning department speaks a little bit more from you can about the western rental in relation to the main site. In the first page of the planning report, you see a small, um. Parking lot, right next to the restaurant, we just wanna make sure that that's the purple that's owned by the applicant or will be. Uh, and will be combined by the applicant after, but uh, standard procedure to combine parcels after receiving planning commission review. And we've requested applicants to do this um, in our last couple of meetings, so it's. Fill that out of the order. After thorough review of this application, the team department finds it comfortable with offering approval. And the rest of the world from state making for the secondly in view. And the site plan, um. From the government. I would offering that and thoughts and revenue package.
All righty, thank you. Commissioners, do you have anything in the sign? Before we ask the other applicant to approach. Oh, you're pretty much exhausted, isn't it? All right, uh, is it?
I do have a question for the planner. I just wanted to clarify, we saw floor plans. With seating was the, were the, was the floor plan for the seating for the restaurant or for the lounge?
So, that's a great question, thanks for bringing that up. The floor plan for the restaurant is not within your pocket. Something that the applicant just submitted recently, and the restaurant is a small restaurant, so the floor plan that you received is the, the Hookah Lounge.
Uh, and then. So we, so for the floor plans that we have, it doesn't even show where the carryout portion would be?
The site plan that you're reading your packet does show where the small restaurant could be, it says text and it's not an outline of the building.
Hmm. Okay.
Anything further?
Did you say that they submitted new plans to you?
We just received the additional floor plan for the, the very small restaurant. So, um, to. There's a couple things that are standard procedure that we got other applicants doing in tact in, uh, like. We are standard condition for somebody to update their, their application, so we got them to update the name, or call other, other restaurants to restaurants. As the carryout because that's what I think. And then we also asked them to add work in for the, the small restaurant. You'll either minor request that we still feel comfortable with, uh, well, it will create integrity design, comfortable with determining approval. While there might be some minor things conditioning, we still feel comfortable looking forward.
Okay, I do have other questions, um, but they may be answered, um, when, after the applicant speaks, but it kind of pertains to. Um, your recommendation for the entrance, um, being on the east side of the building. I assume that that may have some connection to, um, what's happening on the west side of the property. And also the ownership status of the west side of the property, so, um. I think that's most of my, like, all, all of my questions are pertaining to those.
Commissioner Williams.
Um, I do have a question regarding to the, the restaurant, do we have dimensions that it was just in text, do we have a dimension of what the restaurant size is telling?
Well.
Uh, yeah.
It's said part of this packet, right? It's the, you said the text.
Hmm, no, good. Well, the text doesn't, I don't, I don't.
I don't think.
I don't, I don't think so. I don't think it's the gift, the dimensions of actual, like the restaurant.
Okay, well, this much remains as that, I mean, I do understand right here, but the, the applicant. Already.
Said it, said, I'm sorry, said it last part here.
The applicant can provide the information about the, the, the restaurant.
Okay.
This. Um, by turn.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so thanks for bringing that forward, question season. The first recommendation that we have from the league department that Mara spoke to the applicant about, and everything's good from the applicant's perspective. Is to create an entrance to the community from Inks to Row, so create entrance to the restaurant. From Inks to Row, right now, as the site plan is treated, the restaurant entrance would be on the other side of the building. That does not involve uh, Inks to Row at all, so we're thinking to improve the community further, engage with, or. So we're thinking to improve the community further, engage with or enhance walkability in the area. Help residents come to the restaurant and meet more of the community pleaser making uh, components that the applicant's comfortable with doing. We thought about creating a main entrance right off Inkster Road. And since the state requires that a restaurant and a hookah lounge are separate, they maintain a separate entrance. The planning department had the idea to create a lobby. And that would also help with energy efficiency as well when doors open and close. But the, we have shared lobby with a restroom and then two separate entrances, one for the hookah lounge and one for the restaurant. That's the recommendation that we have.
And did you say the applicant was, um, comfortable with that recommendation and is willing to change the entrance?
Yes.
Okay, great.
We can hear from the applicant themselves. But yes, I've had numerous conversations with the applicant who, who, he wants to make a good, a good in front of us.
Yeah, nobody just had, they're already over there cleaning out the building and look like they're using that entrance that you're talking about. In the front.
Oh, and it's in use now?
Well, they looking, they cleaning the building out. So that front entrance never was used and it was, we, we never got the Fatouche restaurant. So we know it is the side pocket or.
Right, right, right. Put me up, what you said.
For us, the entrance, you know, has always been on that, uh, on the north side of the building. Right, so that other entrance that you guys are talking about added, it makes it more attractive. It actually looks good. I mean, as they're over there cleaning out the building, I'm assuming you got a general to clean out the building. So they're already doing that now. So it looks good. Like it.
All right, well, we're gonna, uh, address Commissioner Davis's question, or did you want to wait for the applicant?
Oh, well, I already said, but when we talked about this last week, last time, that they didn't want to tear the kitchen out. Well, the kitchen is there. So for the size of the restaurant, I don't, I didn't get all of that part, but I remember talking, talking about the kitchen. Everything's there. They didn't want to tear it all out just to be the hookah lounge. That's why they bring in the restaurant.
Cause it will be, it will be more financial, it will be made more financial sense instead of taking all of that out. To keep it there and then add on the restaurant.
Plus they could provide something, something to leave for them to sell for something.
Yeah, I think it's a good fit.
Okay. All right, Ms. Youssef, uh, please feel free to approach the podium and elaborate on any details and then answer any questions the commissioners have.
Yeah, what about a question I'm ready?
So size of the restaurant, she wanted to know.
Oh, Commissioner Williams wanted to know the.
It's gonna be seating.
What are the dimensions of the restaurant?
Like, I would try and make it like Arabic food, whatever like that. And the parking for the restaurant behind the building. The old parking behind the building, all for the restaurant.
How big is it gonna be?
It takes like, uh, how much, it's like twenty-five cars.
The actual restaurant itself?
And you have the property behind the, the buildings, it's mine too.
How big is the restaurant gonna be? Building itself?
Oh, the inside lies, just like a couple of tables. It's not like big restaurant or whatever like that.
Would that make seven foot? Twelve hundred, twelve hundred thousand, two thousand square feet?
That could.
What it gonna be?
It's small.
Seven hundred?
Yeah, 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 something like that.
Like seven hundred square feet?
It's not a huge restaurant or whatever like that. You know, just small and large.
And then too, I mean, you'll feed the, you, you also feed the hookah lounge as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's.
The most basic go the hookah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really what it's for. It's for when you're in the hookah lounge, you can order food and it's like that all throughout any hookah lounge. It's in the state of Michigan, they separate the food from.
That's how I deal with the blame in the state of Michigan.
So, yeah, so you'll order food from the restaurant as you're sitting in the lounge and they'll just deliver it over to you.
Yeah, yeah, with a, with a, a plastic box to carry out box.
Exactly.
All the stuff like that. I know.
Totally understand that.
Yeah, I deal with it, blame, you know, the state of Michigan.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I have lighting already for the hookah lounge.
Right.
Yes, I know.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
A simple menu, we're not like, you know, huge menu and stuff like that. No, we're not doing stuff.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Williams?
Um, I think we do need to know the size of the restaurant. Uh, dimension first. I mean, you don't have that.
Well, hold on, let's step back. Site plan review. As soon as I think, we're going to site plan review.
The site plan?
I don't change, I don't change nothing in the restaurant. I think I have to go. Just place the clause for months.
No, I'm saying, let's refer to the site plan review for those dimensions.
Right, because you could do that nowadays. You're talking about how many people will be able to sit in there.
No, no, I just want to know how big is the actual portion of the restaurant since they're now making a lounge, they're gonna put a lounge, that's when you access both.
The lounge, the lounge, we can see in the site plan, but, but we don't see the carryout.
Carryout restaurant.
Uh, so this is what the applicant submitted. We don't have a P D app of it yet, but that's why it's a condition of the site plan is to receive the P D app, the floor plan with the restaurant.
What?
Um, and here's the floor plan for the restaurant. I calculated it's roughly six hundred square feet. And I don't know what the usable floor area is.
Uh, six hundred square feet, this is what the restaurant important.
Well, this space, uh, I calculated it's roughly, it might be, might be like six fifty.
Okay.
And I don't know what, uh, I think this is just the kitchen. Um, and so the usable floor area would be where like there's some minor tables and chairs, but you can see it's probably like.
But six hundred, that's, that's what I need.
All right, seven hundred.
Six hundred.
That's what it was before. There we go, just say.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions, commissioners?
Yes, I recall, we talked about this before because then I, because riots was not really.
Not a drive.
They are the carryout.
Yeah.
So they're just like, like a few chairs put in the way for their food.
Right.
Right, so they, they, it was just like a walk in time. Exactly. So it's not a lot of space. Right, yeah.
It's about almost like mold.
Right. All right, lounge is gonna kind of serve as a sit-down restaurant type. Well, because the hookah lounge, they're mainly doing the hooks, they can't serve a hookah here this year.
But you can, but you can eat your food in the lounge?
Fooded, yeah.
That's allowed.
That's allowed. That's allowed.
That makes, I don't understand.
Yeah, it's the weirdest thing ever, something with the state. I don't understand it. I.
People who are into hookah, they want to come over there, get some food, even though I go to hookah.
Yeah, okay, we get hungry.
Right ahead.
So this originally was just carryout, but Sapa wanted to give more to the community and also want steak making. The Sapa, all the applicants is providing seating for residents to come in and also use the restaurant. But it's a smaller restaurant due to the limited square foot.
Also, it's more than just a carryout. Now, it's, cause it wasn't more than it's carryout at the last meeting.
That's true, you got more.
So now it's better. Because now we're gonna have a little seating.
Let's fix the time, let's focus.
Okay.
Um, one of the things I know you guys were asking about and is weird, um, I guess we have to take into consideration when Michigan opted in to non-smoking restaurants with food. So that might be a thing, uh, or a condition as to why hookah and food have to be separate.
Yeah, got it. Okay, it's still weird, but thank you.
So just separated by the walls.
Have a special license for that.
Okay. And I, I do have one more question. Um, I apologize, I said I have, I asked my last question, but I had something written down that I just wanted to double check, um, with the planner. Do you feel, one of the other things that you, um, wrote down had to do with like the exterior lighting? Is that something that should be addressed here? Does that get read into the, um, recommendations? Or do, is that something that happens administratively?
Yeah, so photo metrics plan is also a minor element of the, I mean, it's a major thing from practicality. But what I mean by minor is that it doesn't change the integrity of the design. So therefore, the city department doesn't view that it should hold up the applicant moving forward as they create their, their construction set of documents to the final site. And then all of the items, all the conditions that the commission puts on as I've been or see how well the plans are ranging through you are taken into consideration have to be met when the applicant goes through the final site.
Thank you.
Anything further, commissioners? All righty, anything from the pla, further from the planning department?
You know, just that there are recommendations in the mission, well, in the list. And it's not the planners, um, please power to require recommendation, but it is the commission's please power to require.
This is under special land use or site plan?
Oh, special use.
Okay, commissioners, please take note of that. All righty, anything further from the applicant? Hearing none? Done? Okay, thank you very much. All righty. We're here, you lot are clear on that one. All right, commissioners. Floor is open for a motion for the special land use to be recommended to city council with the recommendations of the planning department.
Make a motion.
Support.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Davis and supported by Commissioner Faison. And that is to approve, I'm sorry, recommend the approval of special land use with recommendations. Any further discussion?
Um, the recommendations we have required.
Requirements of the site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, are you still support that?
Yes.
All righty. That motion has been amended, uh, please reflect it correctly. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, all the polls? Motion passes. Now we're over to the site plan review. Believe the same, uh, verbiage should be utilized as it was for the, uh, special land use. Floor is open for a motion.
I make a motion.
Support.
And probably moved and supported for the site plan review to be approved with the recommendations and requirements per the planning department. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. All the polls? Motion passed. We're down to new business and we have none. Now we're down to miscellaneous. We have a couple of items under miscellaneous. We have redevelopment ready community training August eighth, twenty twenty-two. I believe this might fall under Commissioner Faison's purview and/or the planning department. Whichever one of you wants to run and jump and take it on, go right ahead.
It's a joint effort.
Go right ahead.
Um, I, I'll just jump in and say that, um, we are really excited to host, um, city council and other development facing boards and commissions on August eighth, um, to have a training by our M E D C planner on redevelopment ready communities. Um, I think that, um, there will be not only a presentation, but some discussion. Um, and an opportunity to really kind of talk about what kind of vision, um, we want for our community and what kind of, um, economic act, uh, economic development activities, um, our boards and commissions, um, can facilitate in addition to the administration and city council. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking forward to this. We've been planning this for a really, really long time, um, and it's finally happening. Um, commissioners, Williams, or Daniels, um, any, anything else you want to add to, um, the event or?
Oh, but then I'm excited about it. Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to say that, um, I, I think for as a community that we are in a pivotal position to really make a difference in how the next generation, uh, looks at the city. And so I, I think that it, you know, it's really important that we, uh, as a, as a community, rise to the event.
Hmm.
It's, it's critical that we use all of the tools that are at our disposal and stop leaving things on the table.
Hmm.
I hate to say it, but I'm a baby girl from Inkster for all my life. And we have had a tendency in the past to leave things on the table and we just gotta stop. We have to, uh, step it up. So I'm, I'm really excited and uh, looking forward to, uh, helping, uh, facilitate, bring it up extra to the next level.
Wonderful.
And also, you know, this, you know, I think that once the boards and commissions, this training is gonna bring viability to why it is so important that our city, beating our R C community, that's not a really good, take us to another level. Yeah, so once they understand the importance of having a certification behind the city business name, that will, uh, you know, play a big part of what we're trying to do. Uh, when we have that, we, you know, I'm a person, I love certification. So when we had a certification behind our name, that speaks for others. Absolutely. So that means that we're about the business of the city where we see that happening. And I think that once the word, we just understand what this is about, we get more people on it. So that's why I'm really looking forward to the training. And more importantly, we just need to get people out there so they can actually understand what this is about.
Yeah.
And then everybody can move on with it.
All right.
Anything further, commissioners? All right here, now that, and I did, as you saw the email sending out to all the planning commission and all of, uh, the city council and please credit Commissioner Faison for keeping on me. To make sure that I said that out because there's a lot going on right now. You know, it's just one of those things like, well, I'm gonna get to it, I'm gonna get to it. But, uh, the text messages that she sent me, she was very firm in her stance. So I'll get this message out before she took over and, uh,
With love.
With love, and I went ahead and got it out.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I promise Dave, you send him the time and everything with that.
Yep, it was all on that.
It would have to be used in it at the same day as one, if it would be all by our planning.
Okay, so that's gonna be in the next calendar. Yeah, it'd be with the doctrine of the calendar for twenty twenty-two anyway.
Yep. And it is open to the public. This isn't, you know, anything that's just for us. Uh, it's a training for us, but it's open to the public to witness and be educated as well on where the planning commission and the city council is going.
All right, so we all have understanding, uh, where we want to be at, where we want, what didn't happen and what ain't happened.
Definitely.
You know, for the last my years, we can count how many franchises we had on Michigan Avenue. And I count that franchise that went down Inkster Road, went up Meta Belt. We're talking about Michigan Avenue.
Hmm.
You can count just about on one hand, going back to actual franchises. Not with a franchise, not the franchise that's there now, all those on them, they don't count. I'm talking about when we had a couple of stores, Danny's. What was our last franchise moved out of here? Off Inkster Road, that was Church Chicken.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, you give me any other franchise that's been there to with us, we need that type of support and understanding of what we want on Michigan Avenue. I'm quite sure, I mean, I ain't know this one idiot right back, oh, I am only back to him. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the franchisees, we've been there through my lifetime on Michigan Avenue.
When it's not only that.
Artens was one, Bilos, but
He about to go.
Where, where was they at, right? Then you had Danny's. We had A and W Ruby, remember A and W Ruby?
Yeah, I still, I still go for the one around us.
I would say on, on, on top of that, the most important part of it, because when we started looking at R C, Right. it was check boxes.
Right.
So making sure that all of the commissions are doing what they're supposed to do in order to get us ready.
Get there.
Because, you know, we can talk about it, we can meet, we can know what it is, but if no one's doing the work, then that's, you don't get the certification. We started this process in two thousand seventeen and like, we're still like, what? We're like twenty-five percent into the entire process. So it's like, you know, overall, what are we doing? You know, who's responsible, who's accountable, who's, you know, taking on that responsibility from, you know, the beginning of it to the end of it and seeing it through. We know that, of course, you know, the planning department is gonna drive that. However, you know, with the planning commission and if it's us in different silos and, um, me and on different committees, making sure that we're working with the D D A, we're. Me and on different committees, making sure that we're working with the DDA, working with the city council, working with, you know. Properties within the community. Checking the boxes. That's the most important thing in order to get us to our certification. That we don't do that part. That's it. Yeah, but I'm looking forward to, you know, the discussion on, you know. What is all relevant? Because even like with the master plan, the master plan is coming up, it's coming up now to where it's coming up. It's coming up now to where the master plan actually needs to be revisited. Like, you know, so, so what does that cost to us? And 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 how is that going to, you know? Play out as we talk about this, this, this discussion. And then, you know, the parks and rec plant. The last park and rec plant we had was two thousand fourteen. So, you know, with that, us being able to go to DNR and get monies. For the parks and and rec within the city, you know, that's all part of the RRC. You know, and I know that it falls under my umbrella as the mayor, you know, making sure that all these things are checked, but you know, I'm only one person. And then we only have, you know, so many people working on this stuff. So it's like all of us, especially the boards and commission. Really driving this stuff and putting our arms around it. To get it to the, to, 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 to the goal. Just our certification. Right now, we do have some certification, right? What do we? Is it, is some, what are we?
Participating community, I think, is how they worded, but we don't have certification.
We're not certification, but we're like participating. Active. There you go.
Because the thing that it takes for to get that RRC is what it's gonna really make us.
That's right.
That's what it is. It's not just me to think that we have to do to get that certification.
That's right.
That's what's gonna, I mean, you get the profit, the journey of that. Is going to make us a. Really viable and powerful community because if if we don't get those done, we don't have certification. When we get those done, then we know, hey, we got it going on.
Then, I mean, then the state know that we're serious. So you got ME DC, you know, they they know they were serious. I mean, you have other developers know that you're serious. Because you went through this product process. And I applaud the state of Michigan even putting this in place because it's been before to where, you know, it's like, okay, you count on your own. But now through the Michigan Economic Development Corp, it's like, okay. This is what's going to certify you. This gives you that stamp where, you know, I can say that Easter is ready. For redevelopment, you know. And other developers that come, developers are coming to see that we're serious and how we're working and how we're operating with our different partners and our stakeholders within. The region, not just our own community.
Go right ahead.
I just want to add to the point, there's two different tracks in RRC. The the holistic track that we're trying to get. In to be RRC certified. And then there is another track that we're following through right now. We're active since the first year and then the second year. But just because we're not in the second year yet, doesn't mean that ME DC won't offer us funding. They just need to see considerable momentum in our involvement dedication. So this meeting is going to be that I will get from ME DC. To help us fund perhaps some of the zoning work and update or master plan update. Or just put some money in Easter because they see that we're, we're taking action.
And do we actually define it for the public? For the RRC, so it's the redevelopment ready community. Training that we're discussing. So that that's what RR. Stands for redevelopment ready community. That's, that's our goal is to become a redevelopment ready community.
I mean, it's only been like, I mean, it's, it's been in the works for so long.
Been doing an excellent job of 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 navigating. The city should be very appreciative of her navigational skills. When it comes to the RRC. But I'd have been lost.
Oh, no, I, he's, he's on it. I love her.
I love you too. Thank you.
Christian chair, I'm sorry, this is kind of all tough. You're building for sale? I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, so someone else. Sold next door to you, but your building is not for sale.
Yeah, because the next door is.
Oh, okay. So I just got a text message from a person like literally like right now. Your building for sale. I mean, it's just irony of that. They were sitting here right now and I just get a text message asking me, can I meet about this building? They just sent me a picture of this building and said, hey, can you talk to us about this?
It's not listed anywhere, is it? Maybe they're just randomly interested?
I get text message about my house every day.
That's a different scenario. Alright, once you saying it's not for sale, then that's good. And I know that these. I just know that these guys are serious people. So you know, when they call and ask me something, it's like, okay. Oh, okay, alright. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No matter if we have to take up at the next meeting.
Right.
Alright, alrighty, um, anything further about the RRC community trainer? Alright here now, we're down to adoption of meeting calendar for remainder of twenty twenty two. Mark, can you elaborate on that part, please?
Yeah, so we wanted to. That tells us when is the meeting date, when is the applicant is required to submit their application. When the final permission is required, when we need to post the notice of public and when is the meeting. We're gonna post that online so that it's transparent. Everyone knows either the deadlines, we're just making this up, everyone's thing. So one thing that did run into challenges are December meeting, we need to beat that. So for some things as it was. December twenty seven. We're familiar that city hall closed that week. So we're recommending that we be working December twelve.
Okay. Right now.
Well, we traditionally had meetings twice a month. So I think this is the first time we've like ever moved it to where we weren't meeting twice a month. So. I don't think there's a precedent for this.
I'm looking at the calendar, December twelfth and December twenty six would be the second and fourth Mondays. But since, of course, observing a holiday on that Monday because the twenty fifth will be Sunday. And normally the meeting would fall on the twenty seventh, but it's closed. This is, we already canceled our meetings on the twelve. I see what you're saying about moving it to the twelve. So I'm, I'm fine with that if you all are in a. Agreement.
That technically would still be the Christmas of, of during the day anyway.
And it's, it's Christmas, and I call it crunch time because those are those days leading up to New Year's. So, yeah. Yeah, twenty seven.
Right. So who will be fine with? Who's gonna have, I didn't know that way.
And and that's granted that once we get to that point, if we have anything to meet about, because things could.
And based on just, based on what you have and like you said, the guidelines and time and timeframe that we are, wouldn't we still be? Would everything be able to be in that timeframe for the twelve?
Yeah, yeah, it would just be. Expedited timeline for November, you know, then. The only thing is just a newspaper post. Around that time too, because if you have public hearing, newspaper would have to post.
I know what you mean. That's going to be a difficult one because that's going to be on them. On how they do, we, I, we don't know what their exact calendar is or how they shift stuff around the different papers. Also, I guess once we get to that particular point, say maybe in November.
Right, I was gonna say, you could probably actually do, do that now. They should be able to tell you how they can accommodate that whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, any further discussion on the adoption of the meeting calendar for remainder of twenty twenty two? Alrighty, we're down to discussion of September joint meeting on parliamentary procedures presented by the Michigan Municipal League. Are you on the floor?
Yeah, super excited about this. Normal training attended before with Stephen Grant. And McKenna and all the sponsors of the training, the meeting chair brought to by the Michigan Municipal League Commission. And they are going to vent a training on Maryland procedures so that. Basics, have a primer on how to post a public meeting. Have books of public theory and how to follow Robert Hoover and go with me that. So just a primer for everyone in the room and all boards, commissions are invited as well as all members of the public. And so we're just deciding a date with the office of the mayor on that one.
Great.
And I got told her to bring it to this body. I'm like, I'm sorry, I forgot to, uh, mark to bring it to this body so you guys can decide. On what a date would be, appropriate date in September would be.
Yeah, I I think Mondays primarily just because we already kind of sort of. Two most important entities in the city of Dexter, city council, the planning commission, and we were already being on Mondays. So we pretty much had that freedom. It's just a fact, a matter of getting our colleagues to attend. That's a.
Maybe that second Monday.
Second Monday. That would would been in planning commission meeting.
The September twelve?
That it?
September, yes, that would be the second Monday in September. September twelve.
Yeah, because Labor Day is the fifth, so that means city council is gonna be on the sixth.
Then you got the eleventh.
Yeah, so.
That's Sunday, I believe it is.
And it'll be at the same time. That's what we're proposing.
Yeah, I propose that.
Should we give you another day just in case?
Great question.
I mean, the following meeting, I guess.
So is there anything that, at this point, you see anything on our, on the agenda for the next meeting, what could be what?
The twenty sixth.
Twenty fifth.
For August.
There's a little question.
You mean for like our August meeting?
It might be.
There are two applications making the way through.
That can come up at that time.
How long is the training?
So I mean, it's an hour, hour and a half. I would say let's just stick with the twelve for now, see what they say.
Does it have to absolutely be in September?
Ask them to give us some dates too.
The first, uh, uh, the, the planning, the planning commission date of the first part of October. It, it's the September date isn't available, so the October, uh, would be the ten, the ten. Yeah, see, so I was, I was just gonna give them today, September twelve or October, um, ten.
I'm good with that.
Yes, yes, plan with some dates that they asked them to give us some that they're available as well.
That has nothing to do with that.
Just in the event that they're not. Available on the dates that we provide, we also have some type of. Guidelines and dates to go off of. We could say, okay, we can settle for this, even though we do prefer this.
Yeah, they asked us to.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, anything further commissioners on the joint meeting for parliamentary procedures? Here now, we're down to item number nine, second hearing of the public. These are for non-agenda items. But we do have two members in the public. If you wish to approach the podium and address this body at this time for non-agenda items, please feel free. Seeing no movement in here in the, we're, the floor's.
Okay, I want to make sure I made an announcement. So the department is looking to schedule. The marijuana applicants at the August fifteenth meeting. I just want to put that out in the room.
Oh, okay. You mean the folks that have just. That is really helpful to know, to be able to track, like how, thank, yeah, thank you for sharing.
Would that be Ash and? That be Ash and the hookah lounge or just Ash?
And the hookah lounge.
Ash, cook lounge and.
But basically, if you come to that city council meeting, bring a snack and a blanket.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta get them done, you know, we were just looking at, you know, what would be the most feasible way to do it. I mean, we could probably do Ash. Probably do Ash in the hookah lounge is the upcoming meeting if we wanted to. Technically, we could and then do all the marijuana related stuff on the fifteenth. You know what I mean? I mean, it's really, Mr. Chair, it's really, and that's what I wanted to make sure that we're talking about. As it relates to how things are coming to council. Once it's proved, as approved from here. And Mr. Chair, I would say that you, you know, with the planner and say, okay. You know, when is this going to be coming to council me? Because for me, you know, I'm looking and waiting for them to get to me and give me an action request. For it to go on the agenda. And I'm like, okay, well, what's going on with this stuff, you know? So, uh, Mark and I, we had a discussion on, you know, just how we want to see this stuff come. So I know from, you know, the conversation that we had has prompted us for the fifteenth. So then that way too. Because at the last council meeting, I heard, you know, council members that were saying that, hey, you know, we don't know necessarily what's going on. So in between time, me, you get with them. Kind of talk to them about and prep them about what's happened. Especially if they haven't been attending planning meetings.
Well, I know in past practices, you know, nor- normally, it just depends on, though, I guess where applicants are in the process. Once we voted or recommended for approval. It will go to council the next following week. But I know also, again, it depends on where they are in the process and what plan and they're saying. So if Ash Street and three, six, four, Easter Road is ready. To come before council for the next meeting, so be it. Let it come right on. But if not, and they need to be on the next agenda or need more time to, you know, uh, it's going to happen other than that. If they're ready to go August first, it's a rock and roll.
Yeah, and then again, just with respect to your position, Mr. Chair, if you could, just make sure. I think you tell them to make the action request to come to council.
Okay.
So then they'll bring it to me and then I'll say, okay, yeah, city clerk, pop this on.
Alright, let's do it.
And we're all on the same page. And I would just encourage all of us, again, when we have action items on the agenda, when we recommend something to the council. You should be in attendance. The council may have questions for you, or even the general public, because a lot of people just come that don't know what was going on. And you know, some people may have a different perspective and just, you know, saying stuff. And it's like, if you're there in the audience, you're able to kind of say, you know, hey. No, this is this, and let me show you that, you know, whatever, you know, or sidebar with people, because it just gets. Like, uh, you know, blood in the water, like a frenzy, you know?
And that's a great point, because when I've sat in on Garden City Council meetings and there's been issues with, or major concerns, I'm sorry. With things that were happening in their downtown development area. Or district, I should say. The DDA members were there to speak. Now, what was, just being a hundred percent honest. Was my volume was that the DDA was totally against. What was being brought on the floor to the city council. But the city council and everybody was ready to move forward. Now, again, that could have just been their opinion because at that meeting, they were talking about converting Alberts on the alley to a banquet hall. And just to park in and different things like that. And I don't know what was discussed at the DDA meeting, but I know for a fact at that time. Different members from the DDA did get up and speak out against the development, even though. They only had, just like city council. A recommendation, they don't get the actual vote. Or the decision to say yay or nay, so.
And and that's, that's pertinent though. I mean, because it's the same thing. I mean, you know, you know, because we're all members of the community. Or or against, you know, speak on why you're for or against. You know, I think it just adds, you know, to the decision-making process. Especially with the entire council and then the public is chiming in at the same time and they, they'll have awareness, you know, where you're staying. It's just like, we, we're just, for me, with this body. We're saying, okay, yeah, we recommend it. And then we send it to council and we're not even present. You know, it's like, I mean, wouldn't I know that you and I were part of council and I said that you guys aren't present, but just saying, you know. It, it's important for you to be there, you know, when we're recommending stuff to council.
Alrighty.
All righty.
Yeah, and just two more things to, um but please keep looking for volunteers to join the neighborhood watch program, the watch clubs. You guys know, and there's also National Day Out on our second from.
Nice, and let me just add on to it, I will be having a lunch this Thursday at the library at twelve o'clock, free food. Just come over and talk to me, I'll be there, just kind of hanging out. Um, you know, I typically have lunch with the mayor before uh COVID, and now this will be our first one after COVID. So uh we'll be over at the library, it's a beautiful space, so just to put that out there, since we're making announcements, you know, you guys don't want to come, or just tell anybody from the community to come.
We don't, you're doing inside or we gonna be outside?
It'll be inside, it'll be be inside, it's gonna be pretty warm. Good weather now. Yeah. We gonna get there, we gonna get to some outside stuff during, I know you like to be outside.
I did see the email.
Cooking that day, so let's.
I was just gonna add something to the to the announcement.
Right.
Um, totally random idea, but um I was really, really impressed with, like, I went to the music festival on the first day, where um like the hip hop night. Um and as far as I could tell, like, we had so many young people and no incidents, and it was just so nice to see something that was dedicated to our young people. Um and for them to have like the stage, like they literally had the stage.
On the boat.
And they're not represented, as far as I can tell, um in our leadership, like, our leadership is kind of getting, like, our average age in leadership is getting up there. Our young people need to be involved, um and they need to be prepped to replace us, so. Um if there is any way, like, just, and especially because our artists were there, like, that's so amazing that we even have this much talent. Um if there is any way to kind of round up the, just the talent that participated and have them like chat with you and talk about what they need as artists, um. Random idea.
No, no, that was a trick, so not necessarily saying, you know, just tricking them, but at the same time, you know, that was the carrot, you know, so we've already started that.
Good, good.
Not only were the young people represented, it was a lot of older people that was represented, and then, you know, the hip hop era, you know, that, you know, you know, I grew up in, they were they were there, and they was really excited, and like, they're now, they're starting to do different stuff, you know, in in small pockets throughout the city, so.
Good.
You know, they'll definitely, you you'll see the representation, and and even from that, with uh, you know, our young people just volunteering and being there that day, you know, for our Parks and Rec Commission, the youth commission, the 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 youth advisory commission to the mayor, you know, so all those things are starting to to fish their way through the pipeline, but very good idea, it's already started, the synergy is there.
Good.
And we were really excited about their opportunity to to represent their community, and they did it in such a way that was phenomenal, but the people are still talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yes.
Saying that.
In Inster did, Inster did very well. Um I I I'm I'm proud of my city, good, bad, or ugly, but I I I think we saw the best of Inster. Some memorial day parade, summer fest, uh I I I I'm an Insterite to the day I die, but I was very, I was proud to be an Insterite.
You know what was so funny, the biggest thing that I got from all of this is that people were saying, you know, man, I'm in Inster? Like, it was like, like, people were like, man, it reminded me of being somewhere else, or being, you know, across the country in California, or being in Florida, you know, it's like, yeah, like, you could have, you could create what you want to see, it's just about.
And that's the key.
Being together, really focused in on it, and making sure that we're, you know, including everybody and having all the voices there, because I agree with you, I mean, as we talked about, you know, just the age, you know, difference in the community and leadership, I mean, you know, it's forty five to seventy five, you know, we missing that gap.
We're missing them.
At eighteen and that, that that forty five, that's very important, this, they're very active too. Uh we have some powerful people in the city of Inster that's in that age group, that's doing a lot of wonderful things outside of the community. They haven't been engaged to do things in the community outside of just music. I mean, in every uh aspect, we got some powerful attorneys and developers and all types of stuff that's from Inster, that's across the country doing different stuff now, that actually came for the hip hop thing, like, man, I want to get involved. Yeah, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's just gonna, it's it's working.
Good.
Years ago, when Anne Capella was here. We had a person come from D C. Come to D C to see our place, and they wanted to bring a business in here, but you know how he found out about that? It's because somebody, some young lady that lived in Inster is working in D C, and she heard him talking about it, and she said, Inster would love to have that, and they came to see.
Yeah, but they gotta come and see us, we gotta be ready, and that's part of the redevelopment ready community stuff, that's part of, you know, cleaning up your curb, you know, taking care of what you have currently, you know? When when people are coming into Inster to do business, number one, you know, they look at the demographic, you know, that is based off statistics, it's based off the numbers, it's based off of the census. People are saying, you know, I'm gonna locate a franchise here versus located in Wayne or Dearborn. It's like, okay, you stretch Michigan Avenue for Inster is two miles, and you're doing fifty five on average, you know? So by the time you get through it, it's like you're in Wayne or Dearborn, where they travel north, east or west, and, you know, you can get everything else that you want, and all those amenities, why am I stopping in Inster when you look at the poverty rate, you look at the crime rate, you look at unemployment rate? But all those things are too misrepresented, and if we're not speaking from our different positions in a way that's, you know, showing the positive stuff. I mean, why wasn't the news out for the summer festival for all three days, when you gathered over at least two to three thousand people per day? You know, interacting with one another, you know? So that's the type of stuff that we have to use these different formats through our phones, because we got the power of the world right here in our hands, you know, and spreading the the good news of of Inster, that Inster is clean, safe, and accessible. And and making sure we doing everything that we need to do, so when people do come to our community to invest, that they see what we see. And that's the part, they don't see what we see, because they're seeing it through the eyes of the YouTube to say that we're the ghetto of Detroit, you know, and and how are we combating that, you know? And that that's super sad that when when we just continue to allow it there to to continue on, when we can't come together and just work together in a common sense manner to to.
That is so cute, because even like at the summer fest, there were so many previews of past Inster residents that were amazed. At their hometown, because they just didn't see it, they were like, oh, my God, look at what's going on. This is totally different, I I have so many people that I know that was there at the summer fest, was like, I didn't even know we could even do this, like, yeah.
It's all of us together. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to cut you off, I'm gonna allow you to continue this conversation after we adjourn the meeting.
They'll move, Mr. Chair.
Is there support? All right, we're probably moved and supported, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passed, and the time is eight fifteen P M, you all have a great night, and again, please continue the conversation, I just wanted to make sure we learned meanings, um. We're ready done. Nope, but I will advise you guys of what I was speaking of, I would advise you guys what I was speaking of earlier, so if some of you may or may not know, I suffer from an eye disease, box hair, keratoconus. It affects both of my corneas, well, the doctor, I've had surgery in October on my right eye, we just.